Today is Monday, March 21st, 2022. I'll now call the City Council of the City Council Regular Meeting to order at 7:26 PM. And there is a quorum on City Council. Item number two is a pledge. We have our pledge being led by Mason Garcia, planner in the Development Services Department.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mason. Item number three are presentations and recognition. Three A, recognition of the Parks and Recreation Department on their TRAPS awards. We have a presentation by Councilmember Anthony Morales.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Thank y'all for coming out today. I'm really excited tonight. I don't have the recognition certificate to provide you tonight, but really excited tonight to recognize our Parks Department. They recently won a lot of awards. Jason, will you come up? And anyone else from the Parks Department? So, recognition of Parks Recreation Department for their recent recognition for their Texas Recreational and Parks Society, including winning the prestigious Gold Medal Award. Wow, there's a lot of you guys bringing it. So they won the prestigious Gold Star Medal Award, the Lone Star Recreation Programming Achievement Award, and the TRAPS East Region Advocate Award. So congratulations to all. I'd like, if you could speak on, I'd like Jason just to talk a little bit about each of those awards.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and it's a pleasure to be here, and we appreciate the honor. Real quickly, the first one I want to recognize is the East Region Advocate of the Year Award. And that is given to a person or an organization that has not a staff member, who has volunteered their time and their energy and their efforts to promoting Parks and Recreation in our local municipality. And this year's recipient was Lawrence Turner, who is our Parks Board President. Lawrence has been on the Parks Board for 20 years and has been the president for the last 11, so we thank him for his service, and Missouri City is a better place because of him. The Lone Star Programming Award is awarded to an organization for the best new recreation program in the state. We won it for our Outdoor Explorers Camp, which we debuted last summer. It's an outdoor recreation program for Little Tykes. And the Recreation Department, through a grant from Texas Parks and Wildlife, we have started a outdoor recreation program with kayaking and biking and archery and things to get people outside, and we want to start teaching people the safe ways to be outside from a young age. So congratulations to the Recreation Department on that award for the best recreation program in the state of Texas. The Gold Medal Award is the highest award that an organization can receive from the Texas Recreation and Parks Society, and it is something that a city can win once every three years. This is Missouri City's fourth Gold Medal Award and the first one since 1997, so it's been 25 years since we've taken home this award, and we feel that we are back, and we hope to be back up here in three years with another one. So we are proud to provide the services of Parks and Recreation in Missouri City, but it's really not just our department. We couldn't do it without the elected officials behind us that support us and all the other departments that help make us a success. We don't operate in a vacuum or in a silo. We couldn't do it without the Communications Department, without the IT Department, without police and fire, and without planning and Public Works. We really do come together, and anything good and great in this city is because we are a team, and I'm grateful for that. So this is not just a word for the Parks Department, but any staff member that is here, so thank you.
Lawrence, would you like to say anything? I'll just say that both the mayor and I served on the Parks Board, and he's done an outstanding job with our Parks Department, our Parks volunteers, and what you do for our community. We appreciate you. So on behalf of City Council, we appreciate all you guys. Keep up the great work. We're looking forward to some great, exciting parks through the bond, and let's have fun.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all. Item number three B, recognition of Police Captain Paul Polton on his retirement. We have a presentation by our Chief of Police, Mike Berzan.
There we go. Got one now. Greetings, Mayor and Council. If it's okay, I'm gonna step up here and bring the command staff with me. You know, I don't get this honor very often, where I get to recognize a true leader of the department. And we ask him to give us a, and who I'm recognizing is Captain Paul Polton, who has 31 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Missouri City. And first of all, I want to thank his family, because every day when he walked out of that house, you did not know whether he was coming home or not. And if you don't have law enforcement in your family, no one understands what that feels like unless you have military in your family, and you knew, you know exactly what that feels like. So first of all, thank you, family, that you've supported him this long. And Council and Mayor, we thank you all for always being supportive of us. But we ask Paul to give us a few highlights of his career, and you all that know Paul, he's pretty matter-of-fact. Everything he says is pretty succinct, and he's always smiling. Not true. But I'm gonna read you what he gave us, and this is Paul Polton, true to form. He gave it to me bullet style. But he began his emergency services career in 1983. I think he was like 12. How old were you, like 19? 20. With Fort Ben County EMS. He left EMS in 1991, but he was a lieutenant over the Fort Ben County EMS service when I started the Police Department. So he was pretty high-ranking in EMS and decided that he wanted to serve the citizens of Missouri City. And again, he began that career in 1991. So counting his EMS time and his time with the city, he's got a total of 39 years of public service in the emergency services. That's almost unheard of in this day and age. And he's got most of his head. You know, you hear about the trailblazers in law enforcement. He clearly fits that bill. He would volunteer and join a lot of different programs without being told, because he realized there was a need, there was a void, that he knew he could stand in the gap and take care of. He has worked in every division and every capacity in the Police Department. He's held different positions, including police officer, public safety officer, which for you all that don't know, he was a fully certified firefighter, and he went through the second Missouri City Fire Academy back in the day in like 1991 or 92? 92? So he was also a firefighter. We call him a nozzle ninja. He's also served as a corporal, a detective, sergeant, lieutenant, and as you can see, he's a captain in the command staff now. I don't know how you'd describe a trailblazer more than that. He's also served on many specialized teams, including, he was a SWAT team member, served on the dive team, he was part of the ATV search and rescue team, he was a firearms instructor, he served on bike patrol, and he was a field training officer. He was recognized by the 100 Club in 1993 as Officer of the Year. He's a graduate of the Bill Blackwood Law Enforcement Management Institute of Texas at Sam Houston State University, the Leadership Command College, and he's also a graduate of the FBI National Academy at Quantico, Virginia. That's who he told us he was. But I've had the privilege and honor of working with Paul and knowing his family on a personal level and a professional level both, and I will tell you that he is a cop's cop. He will back anybody up, but he doesn't stand for people doing the wrong thing. He will step in and make sure that people do the right thing. He is truly a trailblazer in law enforcement. He's probably over here grimacing because he doesn't like comments or compliments or any comments that talk about him, because he'd much rather just do his job and move on and not be recognized. But I think he is worthy of recognition. He's done an outstanding job. It's gonna be a void that is tough to fill, but I know that although he's not gonna be in the department physically, we know he's gonna be with us in mind and spirit, and we count on that, and that he shows up at least every once in a while to make sure he tells us how we should be doing things. But if you don't mind joining me, I'd love to give him a nice round of applause and then give him an opportunity to speak. Y'all can have a seat. I figured since I've given 31 years, y'all can give me a few minutes. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and council for recognizing me tonight, take this time out of tonight, do that. I would love to thank all the men and women I've had the opportunity to work with over the last 31 years here in Missouri City. They're an outstanding group of people, and the citizens of Missouri City need to recognize what a fabulous Police Department they have and the lengths they go to do that. Hi, Preeti. I'd also like to thank the citizens of Fort Ben County. I see you. And the citizens of Missouri City, giving me the opportunity to serve all of you. But I'm gonna tell you, I'm tired of everybody's messes. It's time for me to ride off into the sunset. And I'd like to thank most of all my family. My mother for molding me into the person I've become, because there was times that it could have went either way. I'd like to thank my children, because it's not always easy being a cop's son in the same city you live in. And I'd also like to thank my wife. When we first got married, I wasn't a police officer, and when I went to tell her, because I had other aspirations, and when I went to tell her I wanted to join the Police Department, let's just say she wasn't on board with that. And that's another story, another time. But she grew into it, but there was a lot of missed birthdays, holidays, middle-of-the-night phone calls, callouts, and she stuck with it the whole time, so thank you. And in closing, I'd just like to thank everybody for the time I've had here, and I wish everybody good luck in the future.
I just want to take this opportunity on behalf of City Council, the entire council, not just this council, there's been several councils for the past 31 years that you've served under and served with. On behalf of all of them, and all of the staff, several city managers, city attorneys, city secretaries that you work with, thank you so much for your service. Couldn't be happier for you. We just all learned the other day, Sugar Land, you know, there's a police officer that's having multiple surgeries right now that's going on. And I've heard our chief say this many times, knock on wood, that we have not had the opportunity to have any kind of unconditional events in Missouri City. We're grateful for that, and we do have an excellent team, and thank you all so much. And you're gonna ride off to the sunset, but we'll make sure we'll come back and look for you. I would ask either council members to say a few words if they want to. City manager, city secretary, anybody? All right, I guess.
No, I had to say a few words about Paul. He and I have gone through many of the Police Association golf tournaments with his wife, Beverly. I mean, they were great supporters of it. They made it go, and so from a personal standpoint, we're gonna miss you. From a professional standpoint, with this support group that you've got, you're gonna be okay. Thank you.
All right. You're gonna have pushback from me just a little bit. And we're gonna try to come in as much as possible, please. So I'm gonna do one like this, so I can see the family and then move. Please leave them a little bit. All right, ready? Mayor, you might come in here just a little bit for me. There we go, thank you. One, two, three.
Okay. Item, under presentation and recognition, item three E, recognition of Brianna Means, Kenyatta Sterling, and Carmen Cameron Sterling for their participation in the Black History Month Poetry Contest. We have a presentation by Wachandra Edwards, council member.
Good evening. Last month in February, I was able to start initiative of, I'm sorry, called the Poetry Contest. And so that poetry contest was pretty much geared to the Fort Ben Marshall High School students, for them to convey their passion through poetry, but also giving us their understanding and their perspective for the 2234 corridor. But so many times that we actually, as city council members, make decisions for the corridor, but we never include the kids' perspective. So I wanted to take this initiative to give these youth the opportunity to speak from their heart, speak from what they believe that the 2234 corridor should look like, and just allow them to have fun with it. So I had a panelist that contributed donations, we got some custom-made shirts, and so within that, I just want to honor them and give them their flowers, because they had such a great poetry input. So without further ado, can I get my ladies to come up? Our three finalists, Brianna Means, Kenyatta Sterling, and Cameron Sterling. Give them a round of applause, ladies. Let's support them. This is probably their first time speaking in front of a council. Let's give them the support they need. All right. So our first-place winner is Ms. Kenyatta, I'm sorry, it's Cameron Sterling. Why don't you give them a wave? This is Cameron. All right, thank you. Kenyatta Sterling, the second-place winner. And Ms. Brianna Means is our third-place winner. So each of them will be displaying their poetry, so please be respectful and give them the encouragement that they need. So Ms. Kenyatta, you want to go first? Or Cameron? Cameron's gonna go first.
Hello. Okay. Hands might start to shake a little bit. "America, the land of the free and home of the brave. The land where my ancestors gave and gave. They fought but didn't cave. They were oppressed but somehow still made a way. They held power in their hands, nursed and took care of it so that we will be able to use it according to our demands. And they passed it down to us, a community of Negroes with no unity. Oh, I wish you could see how it could be if you would put down your gun and stand with me. 2234, the place where we reside, should be the place of the black man's pride. Walking down the streets, eating black-owned ice cream, smorning a smile so big it's mistaken for a light beam. It's a majorly-black community, but it's about time we see some black unity. Build up the black-owned businesses, say hi to a little cooperativeness. Work harder to see more people like me, every day walking beside me, every day thriving beside me, every day being our blackest selves, unashamed in our spiritual wealth. Holding hands so that people cannot break us apart, flying away together because we came up from this start. Let's show our ancestors how their hard work has paid off by creating a community in which their feet would have proudly walked. 2234, what will tomorrow be? 2234, why don't you hang around and see?" ... of "Vitalization of 2234" by Kenyatta Sterling. "2234, a street of exceedingly long distance, brought to life like a blooming blossom in 1894. The street full of black excellence, sprouting the work and creations of our people, filled with businesses for us and by us. 2234, in the future, I want to drive by and see people who look just like me, being the best they can be, flourishing with the ideas brought to life by buildings. 2234, just like Black Wall Street, filled with black businesses, thriving by the community around. We all surround each other with love, creating souls better than dove. 2234, black businesses building wealth to be better than before, more to create, more to store. Like Tulsa, Oklahoma, hope to see what 2234 will make out to be. Black-owned doctors and dentists offices, theaters, luxury shops, and attorney's offices." "The road we vitalized, my home, not my highway, stretching a few miles along the way. Nothing special it could be, a little love from everyone in me. I want to sit with my family to eat. I do not want to travel 34,300 feet. I want to sit by a window and gaze, eat scrumptious food and reminisce in the luxurious days. We need flowers, restaurants, and specialty shops. We want to stay in our own neighborhood and enjoy our own beautiful props. I want my road to be as special as the rest. I want to ride down my road and it be the best. The economy has shifted, we are still a neighborhood that deserves to be gifted. Missouri City leaders, what can we do to make our road bright and beautiful too?"
All righty, well, I appreciate you guys coming out to support these young ladies. I'm not actually privileged to sit on the committees to make these decisions, but I thought it was very imperative that we hear from the youth how they feel and what's their perspective of how we should revitalize 2234. Now give these young ladies one more round of applause. Ms. Brown? Ms. Brown? Ms. Stephanie Brown? Can you come up? Ms. Brown was very pivotal in actually helping recruit and get some people to, you know, volunteer and submit their submissions, so I want to thank her for her effort, and she also has a gift for the girls. So we're gonna take a photo at this moment.
Item number four are public comments. Madam Secretary, do you have any public comment requests?
I do have one for the public comments section, and then I have some for the public hearing. Angela Jennings.
As the city secretary calls your name, please step up to the podium and state your name and address before beginning your presentation, and observe the three-minute time limit. The city secretary will keep track of your time and alert you when you have reached the time limit. And City Council is not allowed to respond to you from the dice.
Hello, Mayor and council members. I am Angela Jennings, and I live at 1510 Ashmore Drive in Hunter's Glen 1 and 2. I am making a plea, I guess, because I have been making since January, since New Year's weekend, complaints about a business for violating a noise ordinance. Since New Year's Eve, every weekend, there's been constant loud music coming from the business literally three feet behind my house. Every weekend till 1 and 2 o'clock in the morning, every single weekend. I was advised by the police officers, well, I did leave a complaint on the Missouri City website. They advised me to call the police when there was activity, called during the time of the activity, which I started to do. I did talk to responding officers and also a sergeant who advised me to go ahead and attend a meeting, because that was how, you know, Squeaky Will gets the oil. And so that's really what I'm trying to understand, is how every night calling police. I've called the police now nine times, so this has been going on for three months now. I do have migraines. I do have SLE, which is lupus. I do have severe arthritis. It is affecting my health. I did break out with a rash and had to get steroid shots for that. I'm not getting a chance, with this being every weekend, I'm not getting a chance to really recover from one migraine, moving to the next weekend. Thank you for listening.[596.11][596.11](pause)
City Secretary, do we have any more?
That will conclude the public comments for this section.
Okay. I just have a comment for the City Manager.
No one should be able to come up here and talk to us about the fact that staff is telling
these residents, especially, you know, where she has trouble getting up here to come and talk to us, so this way these issues can be resolved. So, thank you. Item number five are staff reports. There are no staff reports on this agenda. Item number six is consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve with the exception of pulling item six F, Mayor.
Yeah? Second. Then a motion by Mayor Pro Temboni, second by Councilmember Emory. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries seven-zero. Item six F. That would be Jason Mangum, Director of Public Parks and Recreation. Which is authorizing a landscape architecture service to future sites improvement at Quell Green West Park. Go ahead, sir.
Jason, I'd just like for you to just explain what we're doing with this project. So many times we hear that resources, particularly around parks, are not being devoted to the east side of Missouri City, and here's another example of that, and I just wanted to make sure that we talked about this particular project.
Sure. So Quell Green West is an eighteen-acre park, an eighteen-acre park, just right here out our back door on Thomas Taylor and Scanlon Drive. It consists of a covered basketball court, parking lot, a playground, and two full-size regulation multipurpose fields. Those fields have been traditionally underutilized. We've had a lot of youth groups that are interested in utilizing those fields. However, because there's no restroom facilities at the park, it makes it really difficult to have any type of formal youth sport organization utilize those fields. So recently, with the American Recovery Act funds, this body has designated some funds to go to parks and parks improvements, and we are utilizing some of those funds to add restrooms to that park as well as a pavilion, so that those fields can be better utilized by our community. So we are utilizing Kimley Horn, which is, we did a very similar project over at American Legion Park, which was budgeted about seven or eight years ago. We added restrooms and a pavilion, and we're gonna do something very similar right here at Quell Green West.
Can I ask you a favor? For projects like this, whenever they're coming to fruition and we're about to break ground or conclude, can we start marketing those efforts like we do, like we did Ridge View Park and other types of, like the splash pad and things, so that the community as a whole knows that we are devoting time, attention, and resources to all areas of Missouri City? So if you could get with the Communications Department and make sure that that happens, that would be great.
You bet. Any other questions?
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Then a motion by Councilmember Clauser, second by Councilmember Riley. There are no other discussions. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion, please say no.
No.
Six-one, motion carries. Next, we moved, the following item has been moved at the request of the staff. This item was originally ten A. City Attorney Yammo, please read the caption for the audience.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Missouri City, Texas General Obligation Improvement and Refunding Bonds, Series Twenty-Two-Two, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars for the refunding of certain bonds and for the construction of public works, levying a tax and payment thereof, making other provisions regarding such certificates of obligation, including authorizing the preparation and distribution of one or more preliminary official statements, one or more official statements in matters incidents thereto, awarding the sale of the bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of one or more purchase agreements, authorizing the execution and delivery of a paying agent registrar agreement, authorizing and confirming the engagement of certain professionals in connection with the issuance of the bond, finding and determining that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, and enacting other provisions relating thereto.
Thank you. We have a presentation by Elena Portis, Director of Financial Services.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. On February seventh, you received a presentation on the twenty-two-two debt issue, which includes new money of approximately ten point nine million and a refunding of the twenty-ten A certificates of obligation and twenty-thirteen general obligation and refunding bonds. Tonight, we're requesting authorization to proceed with the sale of debt. This morning, the underwriters took orders for this debt sale, and upon your approval, they will move forward with processing the orders. You were given the pricing book, that is a result of the orders taken, and the bond ordinance has been updated to reflect these numbers. We have our bond counsel, Derek Mitchell, with Holland and Knight with us tonight, who will briefly review the information that has been added to the bond ordinance.
Mayor and council, good evening. So you received your ordinance, I think, last week, and at the end of the day, it's the same, what you received is exactly the same as tonight, other than we've updated the numbers. So, for instance, it says here amount not to exceed twenty million dollars. Fortunately, the market was kind, and so we issued eighteen point oh-five million. Other than that, the numbers are what's in the book that I think Hilltop supplied to you.
Okay, so the next steps after approval would be to send the transcript to the Attorney General for review, with the closing and delivery of funds to take place no later than April nineteenth. And so we also have our financial advisor, Joe Moro, with us tonight, and we're available to answer any questions that you may have in regards to this debt sale.
Thank you, Elena. Is there a motion?
A move.
Second.
Second.
It's been a motion by Mayor Pro Temboni, second by Councilmember Emory. Is there a discussion? There are no further discussions. Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion, say no. Thank you. Item seven are public hearing and related actions. City Attorney Yammo, please read the caption for seven A.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, granting a specific use permit, authorizing the use of a three-point-one-oh acre tract of land in the City of Missouri City as a specific use, funeral home, providing limitations, restrictions, and conditions on such specific use, amending the zoning district map of the City of Missouri City, providing for an amendment to the comprehensive plan, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, providing for separability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
Thank you. We have a presentation by Stori Nouri, Planner One.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So we received an application from Kimley Horn and Associates for a specific use permit to allow for the location of a funeral home. This location will be on a three-acre tract of land situated on the southeast corner of Highway Sixth and Shipman's Cove Boulevard. The application included a site plan that proposed a one-story, twelve-thousand-square-foot building and a detention pond between the funeral home and the adjacent proposed residential development. Planning and Zoning Commission forwards a positive recommendation to City Council to allow the specific use permit for the location of a funeral home. The SUP will follow the base zoning of SD Suburban District, except for where SD has no requirement, so that includes building regulations, trash disposal, landscaping, and parking. And for these mentioned items, the regulations will follow their respective sections in the City of Missouri City zoning ordinance. Do you all have any questions?
Sure, thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
A move that we open the public hearing.
Second.
Then a motion by Councilmember Morales, second by Mayor Pro Temboni. Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to the motion, please say no. Motion carries seven-zero. Madam Secretary, do we have any public hearing?
We do not for item seven A-one.
Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Morales, second by Councilmember Riley. Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to the motion, please say no. Motion carries seven-zero. Madam Secretary, do we have any public hearing?
We do not for item seven A-one.
Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Morales, second by Councilmember Riley. Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to the motion, please say no. Motion carries seven-zero. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Temboni, second by Councilmember Clauser. Discussion. I do have one question. Can you come back up here, please? There's been several discussions in that area talking about that intersection of Watts and State Highway Six to have an intersection light. So has that been discussed with this project that's coming along in that corner?
Good evening, Mayor and council. That signal light is already approved. It's in the works. A permit has been submitted to Tech Start. It's been held up there, but a signal light will be installed at the intersection.
Okay. Now, so I'll ask you one more question. Is there medians on that Highway Six? On that portion?
Yes, I think, Mayor, based on my recollection, yes, there is medians.
Okay. Thank you. I have no further questions.
All right, so I have a question. Funeral homes tend to draw large crowds, right? How will they control a funeral, given the, you know, the amount of traffic already on Six? So if there's a large procession, how does all that fit into the zoning and what we're doing tonight?
So with the traffic, with the zoning, at this time, they're only required to provide the traffic impact analysis worksheet, which they did provide. I know on the site plan to help with the preparation of a procession, they have it mapped out to where it'll be like a stacked parking, so that's to help with that, and they've accommodated up to, I believe, twenty. In addition, there's also, I think, seventy parking spaces on the site plan to also accommodate for anybody coming for the funeral.
Okay. And one last thing, there are homes within two-hundred feet, right? So have we sent out letters to the homes?
We did.
On the north side?
Yes, so I sent out notices for homes within two-hundred-and-fifty feet, and we have not received any protest letters or support letters.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And I also want to mention that the developers did reach out to the neighboring HOAs to let them know of the development, so they were pretty proactive of letting them know what's going on here, and they received no negative feedback.
Thank you. All right, there are no further discussions.
Robin, one, just as a matter of interest, I think this is probably the only, the second funeral home that's gonna be in the city limits of Missouri City. I think there's one, if I'm not mistaken, down off Fifth Street in that area. So this is something that I think there's probably a demand, unfortunately, a demand for those services, but I think where it's situated and the way it looks to be structured, I think it's gonna add to the area around those two intersections. Thank you.
There are no further discussions. Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to the motion, please say no. Motion carries seven-zero. Item number two.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, granting a specific use permit, authorizing the use of a one-point-five-nine acre tract of land in the City of Missouri City as a specific use, electric utility station, providing limitations, restrictions, and conditions on such specific use, amending the zoning district map of the City of Missouri City, providing for an amendment to the comprehensive plan, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, providing for separability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
Okay, we have a presentation by Mason Garcia, Planner Two.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. So this is a specific use permit application on behalf of CenterPoint for a Missouri City substation at this one-point-five-nine acre tract of land. It's located north of an existing CenterPoint utility, East Smith, south of Adams, east of Tex Parkway, and west of Crestmont. This is zoned LC-two retail district. The Planning and Zoning Commission did forward this and adopt this report with a positive recommendation. A little bit of background about this site. This site was brought before the Planning and Zoning Commission in November. They did pass this forward with a positive recommendation, but the applicant was asked to clarify a couple items with regards to height of the development utilities and landscape buffer yards and detention. Those items were clarified, and it was brought to the City Council. At that time, it was determined due to the changes, well, to the items provided by the applicant, they pulled it off the agenda, and they took this item back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, at which time a new notice was sent out with regards to this item. And in that notice, it noted that the height would exceed the maximum height permitted for LC-two retail zoning district, which is thirty-five feet. For this site, this is a CenterPoint electrical distribution station, which converts routes electricity to medium voltage lines, which distribute electricity throughout the subdivision. Due to the current conditions of the substation currently at the site, CenterPoint said they need to improve reliability and is opting to install a low-profile design. This is in conformance with the comprehensive plan goal for public and private development and design practice to encourage resource conservation and protection. A couple items that, at this site, that would deviate from the typical LC-two. The applicant is seeking, along with staff's recommendation and planning's and zoning's recommendation, for development utilities that are allowed of a height of no taller than one hundred feet, a reduction for setbacks in the minimum front yard along Texas Parkway ten feet, fifteen feet along Crestmont Place Drive, and fifteen-foot rear yard setback reduction adjacent to the Crestmont Residential Neighborhood, as well as landscape buffer setbacks with the same dimensions of ten feet along Texas Parkway, fifteen along Crestmont Place Residential subdivision in the rear, and fifteen feet along the side road, Crestmont Place Drive. As well as this item, they were, staff has recommended with planning and zoning's recommendation as well for the location of a maximum of ten-foot decorative wall, along with the accompanying Italian cypress or comparable landscaping at this site. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing for item seven-eight-two?
Motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Then a motion by Councilmember Clauser, second by Councilmember Edwards. Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to the motion, please say no. Motion carries seven-zero. Madam Secretary, do we have anybody signed up for public?
No, sir, not for this item.
Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
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 Councilmember Klausert made the motion to close the public hearing. Councilmember Riley, second. Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to the motion, please say no. Motion carries seven zero. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance?
Make a motion that we approve the first reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been a motion by council member Riley, seconded by council member Klausert. Is there a discussion?
Yeah, of course, you could, you bring back the schematic where it shows the wall around the entire.
One more. Keep going.
There. Where is the ten-foot wall going to be placed?
So this diagram is the structure itself. The reason I didn't reference this is due to all of the items going on, but it would be on the outside of this environment. So I don't know if you can identify on the upper left hand and upper right hand corner, there's blue lines on the outside of that structure. It would be on the outside, and along Texas Parkway, it would be approximately ten feet. But this picture does have a lot going on, sorry.
How about going down the side from right to left up at the top? What kind of wall or fencing do we have at that location?
So along the current easement, they do already have metal fencing. Along Texas Parkway, if you're saying from Texas Parkway, that's shielding the current CenterPoint utility easement, they do have the crosshatch metal fencing.
That's existing?
Yes, and they will be removing the current electrical distribution substation when they replace this one. They would have to get this one up and operational before they could remove the current one.
Mason, have the residents been notified what's taking place so they are aware that there's going to be some noise with the construction?
The residents have been notified two times. The first time before the November tenth meeting, and then prior to this meeting, they were notified January twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two, within two hundred and fifty feet of the site.
Thank you. And then my last question is, who's responsible for the landscaping and the upkeep of that landscape? Is it us or is it CenterPoint?
So this would be a private site, privately owned, so it would be CenterPoint.
There are no other further discussions. We have a motion by councilmember Riley, second by councilmember Klausert. Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to the motion, please say no. Motion carries seven zero. Okay, item seven B, item one.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. This item is your redistricting public hearing. I will, I do believe that there are several individuals who are here to speak, so I will kind of run through this presentation. This presentation serves your strategic goals of creating a great place to live and developing a high-performance city team. In this presentation, I won't go over some of the slides I know several of you have seen a few times, but just for the, the public's benefit, the first question that folks ask is what is redistricting? Redistricting is the process of redrawing electoral district boundaries for voter representation. The city is redistricting in order to meet the requirements of the city's charter. The proposed maps that have been presented are derived from the city's redistricting consultant, as well as adopted criteria from the city council. Additionally, the maps are created to comply with legal requirements, and where it's possible, council and public input are also provided and included in the maps. Just highlights from the initial assessment, the council again engaged a consultant back in November to review the city's population information. That review found that the city is, has a total maximum deviation between districts that is twenty-one point eight eight percent. The desired percentage between districts is ten percent. At the time of the assessment, District D was the most populated district with twenty-one thousand four hundred and fifty-one residents, and District C was the least populated district. The ideal number is eighteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven people. That does not mean that the city has to create districts that have eighteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven people per district. That's the ideal size, and federal law allows a deviation of ten percent between the largest and smallest district. And highlights from the established criteria by council, including, included attempting to maintain existing council districts. That was not possible in every situation because, again, the city is required to attempt to distribute its population between the four districts. The council also attempted to maintain traditional neighborhoods, provide connecting territory between each district, and establish, again, that relatively equal population number of ten percent. Since the last public hearing at your last meeting, we've added an in-person meeting that will be held in this ferry room on March twenty-third, twenty twenty-two at six P M. The city has added larger subdivision-specific maps to the website. The city's website does include each proposed map. If you go to the city's website, simply search redistricting, you will see the twenty twenty-two redistricting page pop up. Click on that site, you'll have access to every PowerPoint presentation related to redistricting, as well as all of the proposed maps and data, demographic data related to each map. Just to provide a few highlights from each map, proposed map A is the first map that was proposed. The only changes to the districts in these proposed maps are highlighted on these slides. So if you don't see your neighborhood on one of these slides, your neighborhood will is scheduled or slated to remain in the same district it currently is located in. So for proposed map A, the changes included moving Hunter's Glen Four and Five to District A, and changing or moving Meadow Creek and Pebblebrook to District A, moving Hunter's Point Estates, Olive Creek Mont, Olive Olympia Estates, New Point Estates and Shipman's Cove, as well as Lake Shore Harbor to District B, moving Quail Village Townhouses, Quail Valley North, Lexington Place, and Bermuda Dunes Villas Townhomes over to District C, and moving Oyster Creek Farms from District C to District D. This is just a depiction of proposed map A. I do recognize that for those of you who are looking at this, it is difficult to read. However, again, if you go to the city's website, you'll be able to review a map and zoom in and get a much better look at this proposed map. Demographic information is provided. The overall deviation for proposed map A is nine point three eight percent. Proposed map B includes moving Meadow Creek and Pebblebrook to District A. Again, if your subdivision is not listed here, it would remain in its current district. Hunter's Point Estates would move to District B, Olive Creek Mont would move to District B, as well as New Point Estates and Shipman's Cove. Waterbrook West would move to District C. Sienna Municipal Utility Districts six and seven would move to District C, and Villas at Sienna Apartments would also move to District C. The only difference between proposed map C and proposed map B is that all of Olympia Estates is included in District B in proposed map C. The titles of the maps refer not to districts, but to the order in which the maps have been proposed. So at this time, we have three maps. I do have requests from at least one council member to prepare at least one or two additional maps. Once those maps are prepared, if they can be practically prepared, they will also be posted on the city's website. With that, I will turn it over to you all so that you can conduct your public hearing. But if I may really quickly just remind everyone, the deadline to submit comments is March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. Please send those written comments or requests to mcredistricting@missouri city tx.gov. The next public meeting on this topic is tomorrow. There's a virtual meeting, the information is on the website. There is an in-person meeting on redistricting on Wednesday, March twenty-third, again at six P M. in this room. And on April fourth, there is another opportunity to provide oral comments to the council. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Make a motion that we open up the public hearing? Second.
It's been a motion by councilmember Riley, second by councilmember Klausert. Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to the motion, please say no. Motion carries seven zero. Madam Secretary, do we have any public comments?
Yes, sir, we do. The first speaker is Shotsey Price.
As the city secretary is calling your name, please step up to the podium, state your name and address before beginning your presentation, and observe a three-minute time limit. The city secretary will keep track of your time and alert you when you have reached your limit.
I am Shotsey Price. My address is thirty-one thirty-five Quail Valley East Drive, Missouri City, and I yield my speaking time to Ms. Linda Russell.
Mayor, city council members, I'm Linda Russell. I live at twenty-nine twenty-three Ashmont Drive. I am a Meadow Creek resident, and I am representing many residents who are elderly and didn't want to venture out tonight because of the weather situation. But they wanted me to express their concern, my concern about redistricting Meadow Creek from the electoral District B to electoral District A. We do not want to switch because much of District A's concerns, we feel, are more than likely will not be our concerns on the voting ballots due to location distance. District B seemed to be in compliance of the numbers, and it looked like that District D had more population and leased was in District C. You know, I'm not on the committee to do this redistricting, but a question, why couldn't District D and C kind of get even down there? Don't understand how this redistricting to E benefits Missouri City's residents. It would have been thoughtful also to have started informing the HOAs and the public this past fall/winter about the redistricting through your different communication means. This way, we could have had more input before you put the maps together. Also, just a tidbit, it's difficult to understand the labeling as maps are A B C and the districts are A B C. So when we are listening or watching you at the different workshops, and you start going District A, map B, map A, map C for District C or D, it just gets confusing, especially for our older residents. Thank you.
That was Linda Russell.
Oh, that was. Sorry. Deidre Carpenter.
Wait, didn't someone give the time? So, okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. Linda Russell.
No, you don't have to say, just keep going.
I wanted to know if the individual district meetings were recorded, if they were. Would you please put them on your website? I didn't see that just recently when I looked, because, again, like I said, it was confusing trying to follow when many of us tried to get on the visual part. We couldn't get registered for some reason, it wouldn't let us get on, so we had to use the phone, and we had to listen, and that's why it was so confusing with all the A B Cs and stuff. The maps are kind of difficult to understand and to read. Also, I just wanted to deviate a little bit from this as talking about trying to get some questions answered when I called a week ago to the secretary, Missouri City Secretary, and then I paused, so left message, didn't get any return, also left message, we have to dial the O for whatever service to get more information, haven't heard back from anyone. Is there anyone that answers the phones? That was a concern, I've heard other people say the same thing, because people have had questions about the district that they wanted to clarify instead of trying to write on the website and wait back and forth for answers. Okay, I'm sorry. Just a comment, if there are any extra funds or anything that comes up later to raise funds, we need city code workers, especially out here off of Cartwright Road area. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Cynthia Guten. I'm District A. My address is one-six-one-two-three Fonderen Grove Drive. I am against the redistricting, and I would like to yield my time to some other constituents from District A that could better express our concerns. Thank you.
What was your name?
Tracy Lyslet.
You have Tracy Lyslet?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Greetings, Missouri City leaders. My name is Tracy Lyslet. My address is one-two-seven-two-seven Alderwood Drive, Missouri City, seven-seven-four-eight-nine. I reside in Colony Crossing, Phase One. And as a proud homeowner in the Colony Crossing subdivision, I have recently become aware that redrawing the lines of District A is proposed that would impact our community. The changes suggest The changes suggest that my voice and my vote do not count. What is concerning is little communication beyond your website provided to make HOAs or homeowners aware of these changes. You wish to change it by redrawing lines. Our community needs more than the warehouse and commercial traffic that is currently overwhelming it. You wish to remove needed park and green space that it also needs. Why is this change such a priority? What would District A gain by redrawing the lines now? District D is detailed as the most populated and District C as the least. I concur with the public comment in regard to what viable reasons exist to combine our districts. Our two districts don't necessarily or actually represent two maybe opposing points of view. Our concern is not moving our community, it is redefining the lines that impacts the vote and revitalize commercial space within its boundary that contributes positively to our area. We wish, I wish, District A to remain unchanged.
Well, I just want to say, he said everything that I wanted to say. I don't think we had enough time to really understand everything that's going on, you know, the, had it been addressed, I mean, we're just getting this today. Of course, it was a meeting on the 8th, I didn't, of course, I'm not up to date, but I did get a call last night and I'm here today. But I want to say, thank you for representing our district. I realize that I did miss the meeting on the 8th. As a homeowner, my name is Deidra Carpenter, my address is 12714 Megan Way, Missouri City, Texas. I've learned that our subdivision is being redrawn, the park in the subdivision adds value to our home. So taking away things are not going to help our community. It's already pretty small to me. We need more homes, we need more money spent in that area. We don't even have a grocery store. So to me, rezoning is not what we need, we need more money in our area. 2234 should be looking way better, it's been looking the same way for years. What are we doing about it? So that's my concern. Thank you.
Vaughn Lewis.
I live at 2822 Ashmont Drive, Missouri City, Texas. I've been here for 45 years. I wanted to let you know that throughout the time I've been in my house, we've always been oriented to the Cartwright area and basically me, east, west, I should say. And when I looked at the redistricting map, I noted that oddly enough, in the District C, there was a little cutout for my neighborhood, and then District A abutted to it. And it just looked stupid. So I think that however that map was drawn, it seems to make some changes that are unpopular and don't make a lot of sense. I'm fairly new to the issue, but just looking at it quickly, I thought, this is not a good map. So that's my opinion. Thanks.
Roslyn McLennan.
And I've been a homeowner at 2315 Walnut Ridge Drive, Missouri City 77489. And I came before you this afternoon, this evening, to let you know that I oppose of you redistricting of District B to District A, okay? Thank you.
Jan Fottino.
What can I say that haven't already been said, Councilwoman Klausert? You know, I echo what Mr. Vaughn said. You got the only HOA that's addressed to Cartwright. And somehow you went down Cartwright, you kept the businesses in District B, you bypassed Coyle Valley East, which could have been merged with District D, could have played games there. Now, I'm all for population equalization. But I'll tell you, we're working with the NAACP now because there's another granule. You need to get down to the federal law. I know you guys looked at Reno versus Shaw, which is equal protection under the law. But there's another one, Article 2 of the Voter Rights Act. Not only are you affecting some of the older residents in Meadow Creek, taking away a constituent that supports Cartwright, mayor, you're doing some great work on Cartwright. You need us there. And we've been working hard to improve Texas Cartwright, Texas Parkway and Cartwright Corridor. So at the end of the day, guys, I hope that you go and take a clean sheet of paper and really look at drawing this map that makes sense, because right now it doesn't, unfortunately. I'm representing Meadow Creek Association, and I have gotten almost 120 people that oppose this remapping. And I think you should take that under consideration. Really go back to the drawing board, work with this. There are some cities that started this process as early as first quarter 2021, before the census data, which was delayed, came out. You guys are trying to do this in a couple of months, and it's going to affect people adversely for another 10 years. District D, and I'll say this, was out of compliant. But I think you need to take this down to the demographics and really see what you're doing. And I'm going to tell you this, this is sensitive, and I know you guys don't want to mention it. You're moving African-Americans and other people of color from one box to another. That's packing and repacking. I believe those two districts ought to be protected under the law. You shouldn't touch them. We've worked hard to develop that kind of voting power, if you will, to be able to at least have a couple of people on the council, for what it's worth sometime. But you got two at-large positions. In my opinion, we should go to single-member districts across the board, period. The at-large positions, no offense to Councilwoman Klausert or Vashandra, they're doing a great job. But it makes no sense, this is what started gerrymandering, at-large positions. It's a swing vote to some extent. So we ask that you take a look at this and try to do what's right.
My name is Willie Jones, I live at 2942 Creekway Circle, Meadow Creek subdivision. And I've also taken a look at the maps for all districts. I oppose the mapping for Meadow Creek. And I hope you guys really take a look at that and maybe think about remapping a little bit of stronger. But that's all I have to say. Thank you guys very much.
Good afternoon, city council, mayor. My name is Georgia Harmon. I live in the Meadow Creek subdivision, 2118 Valley Manor Drive. I've lived there since 1997. I'm here tonight opposing remapping of Meadow Creek to another district. Thank you.
Memory Hewlett.
Good evening, councilman and mayor and everyone else. My name is Memory Hewlett. I live at 2114 Peachwood Drive, Missouri City, Texas. I am speaking not just for my resident, but as well as several of the members that's on my street that were unable to attend due to weather and age and what have you. I'm here to say that I oppose of the remapping. In fact, I've already, I received your letter, thank you, Councilwoman Boni. However, my concern is, is that not only are you, when you redistrict, we have no say-so or no options in any of the proposed proposals from A to B and also for C. And like I said, I want to oppose it. I've been at my resident, at my home for, since 1993. I'm a proud, proud resident of Missouri City, as well as the subdivision of Meadow Creek. And I can't, my concern is, is that you all aren't taking into consideration our needs as well as when you redistrict, the next thing that I think will probably come is rezoning and which would possibly, more than likely, make our subdivision less attractive for any new home buyers. So again, I wanted to go on record that I do oppose, and I'm really hopeful that you will reconsider, re-districting, and also redrawing, perhaps putting us, leaving us in District B for that matter. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thandra Williams.
I've heard from quite a few of the residents here in Missouri City that reside in Meadow Creek. Sounds like they have an oasis, they live in District B, and I live in District A. I live in the forgotten district, District A, across the track. And unlike Meadow Creek, who do not want to merge with us, we aren't forgotten Meadow Creek, let me put that out there. We have areas over there that are neglected, we have concerns that are not addressed. So we don't need to grow, we need to just be taken care of and nurtured. Also, with the redistricting, I'm understanding someone will lose out as an elected official. That being said, if we're talking about Ms. Klausert and Ms. Edwards, where does that leave the person that we elected? She will no longer be on the ballot, she will actually lose out, I am pretty sure. If we're talking about at-large positions, where does that leave her? If those areas are going to merge? So I am in agreement that we do not need to merge or redistrict the lines because there are concerns out here in A that Creek does not have, as the lady stated before, Ms. Russell stated before. Their concerns are not our concerns. We don't have the glorious oasis that they have over in Meadow Creek. We're still asking for the lines down 2234 on the South Gessner side to be painted so that we don't run into the 18-wheelers that are out there that cross over the line when it's dark and they can't see. They don't have those concerns, we have those concerns. We have streets, since our community came up in 1993, and I've been there all that time, where the infrastructure needs to be done again. They're cracking, they're dividing. We're forgotten over there. So no, we don't need to add any more communities to our area, we need to take care of our area. And again, they're on the further end of the east side where they have stores, we have nothing over there. And I'm pretty sure we're not going to get anything, and no, you do not want to join us, we are in the commercial district. So all we get are warehouses, 18-wheelers, people running up and down the road, South Gessner, that go at accelerated rates. No one wants to be in District A, we want to be taken care of in District A. We don't need any extra people to come over, any new residents, because you won't take care of them. Let me tell you the truth, you will be forgotten, because we have been forgotten. That's all that I have to say. We need a little love, we do pay our taxes.
Mayor, Mabel Menefee does not wish to speak, but she is here to support opposition of redistricting.
Anyone else?
That concludes that section.
All right, thank you.
Redistricting of, does she specify, or just redistricting as a whole?
Just redistricting as a whole, she lives in Colony Crossing.
Crystal, do you have Bruce as an applicant?
He asked to speak under item 9B. Mayor?
Sure.
Bruce Sabrowski.
Crystal and I had a little miscommunication when I first came in here today. I wanted to speak in the beginning of public comments to commend Ms. Edwards for going to bat for the party on East Antoine Circle with that sidewalk repair that they put out almost $3,000 for. Thank God Missouri City permits gave them their permit feedback or are planning to, and I wanted her to have that yellow flower award again. As far as this meeting goes, District A is neglected, it's been neglected. You're going to throw us in with another part of the city that's neglected. Are you going to put everything in Missouri City that's neglected all in District A? Looks like you're trying to do that. District A is just pitiful. You don't care about District A, and you want to put more areas into District A that are still underserved. You're making one big district that's not being served while you're making investments in other part of the city. It needs to stop. We get no representation in Fon Meadow, we're already zoned to Houston schools. What do we have in common with Creekway Circle? You know what we have in common with Creekway Circle? We're neglected. They need streets, we need a bridge. We have kids crawling through a flood control bayou to get to the park, and you get an award from the state of Texas on parks? Why don't you show them the bayou that children and residents crawl through in Fon Meadow to get to a playground or to a grocery store in Fondren? Thank you.
That concludes the speaker request for this item.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Klausert, second by Mayor Proton Boni, is there a discussion?
Yes, I recall last time we spoke about the redistricting, how it was important for us to have more in-person meetings as opposed to virtual meetings. I know we have a meeting coming up on Wednesday, but I am proposing that we do continue to extend the invitation out to the HOAs, make sure that we have them a good notification that they understand what's going on, and that we have more meetings to come as opposed to just continuing on Wednes, I mean discontinuing on Wednesday and just making our final decision. The consensus is that more people need to be informed, we have a lot of oppositions, and we need to do better with drawing this up. So that's my proposal, and I'm hoping that my colleagues will concur.
I would, I would just like to, I would just like to say thank you to the residents for coming out, expressing your concern, that is your right. I would also like for you to make sure that you put your concerns in writing as well and send them to the email address that's provided. Thank you.
Deidra, I'd like to ask that you revise the maps and how they're listed so that they're not labeled as map A, B, and C, because it is very confusing before we go into our next virtual and public meeting in person. And then I also like to just, you know, state to the residents, you know, I hear your concerns, I'm with you, I'm concerned about these things as well. And I am going to encourage you, as my colleague stated, to put your requested items in a written form. written communication. Make sure that you are specific in how you would like to see those lines redrawn if we have to proceed with that. So they have an outline of where they need to go, where you would like to stay, and where would you like to go? So that they're not playing a guessing game in where they think everyone should go and where everyone should stay. Thank you.
Ejoys, I have a couple of questions. Can you come up here? Quick question. I have a series of questions. I hope you can answer those. Why are we redistricting now anyway?
We are redistricting to comply with the city's charter. The charter provides that within every 10 years, the city redraw its lines pursuant to a federal census that was conducted within the last two years.
So I'm asking, so even if the numbers haven't changed, for example, if District A is more people, District C is the least compared to four districts, so even if there was no changes to any of those numbers, do we still require to look at this redistricting?
We would still be required to look at it. So you all did that. You engaged a consultant. He provided that initial assessment that showed that you do have districts that are out of balance.
So this is put in our charter, right? Which means any, any city council at any time that has to go through this every 10 years?
Correct. And your last process was in 2012.
Okay. So did you come up with these three maps or how did we get these three maps?
The three maps were derived from information provided to the consultant and based on your adopted criteria. On February 7th, you all adopted legally acceptable principles, including maintaining traditional neighborhoods, maintaining contiguous areas, and of course, ensuring that whatever was adopted was in compliance with the law. And so based on those items, the maps were created, at least the first map was created. The second map was created based on comments from Councilmember Riley at, I believe, the February 21st meeting. Another map will probably be created if the numbers balance out. And once that's created, that will also be placed online.
Sure. So based on some of the comments that I heard, District D and District C, right? The most and least?
Yes, sir.
Now, could we have taken the two districts and taken residents from D and put it in C to fluctuates without touching A or B?
No. What tends to happen when you redistrict is that when you touch one, you have to touch all.
And why is that?
That's because there's a finite, a set amount of people. And so when you take away some from one area, you end up having to add others to another area.
Okay. So with that being said, so regardless of if we were taking people from D and putting them into C, so this way it equals up, so you would, you would end up boxing out A and B. So basically, A, B, C, and D would be somehow impacted in order to make that happen?
Correct.
Okay. So if that's the case, we talked about the Caucasian, the Asian, the black, I mean, all these different demographics. So between the three maps, is there any map lost to our current situation that we have today? Right? The one that's been going on for the past 10 years? Or I should say, you know, 12 years?
The current map.
Current map. Have we, according to Map A, Map B, and Map C that's in front of us? Have we lost any segments of demographic to either map or is it all equal at the end?
So when you say lost, are, do you mean like a significant change in demographics?
Yeah, significant changes where we, where-
No. And so if you, if folks want to look at the PowerPoint presentation as well, there is a comparison chart that goes between Maps A, B, and C that provides the changes in demographics from the current map and the proposed map. So for example, the map that's up on the screen now is Proposed Map A. You can see from Proposed Map A, and we'll just take District A, that the current Hispanic population in Map A is 32.85% of the population. Based on, and that's the current, current map. Based on the Proposed Map A, the change is slight. It's less than about 3% and it becomes 29.92%. Really, the deviation between groups per map, I think the maximum amount is about 6% or 7%. And you'll see there are some that are even lower than that. We have some that are less than 1% change in demographics-
Okay.
-by population.
So instead of showing it this way where you go a couple of screens over and then there's another population, demographic version, and then you go another three slides over, can you, for this meeting on Wednesday, can we get all of them, A or 1, 2, 3, three maps on, what I'm looking at, can we put it on one big piece of paper just so people can see?
I can, I can try. I can work with the GIS, someone who has the ability to blow things up.
No, no, I'm talking about if this, this slide right here is 60, the next Map B slide is 63, right? I'm just saying, take 60, 63, and 66, put them one at a time so you can compare it. I mean, it's hard to go back and forth.
Okay. Yes, sir. So like Map A, B, and C?
Correct. So this way that you can see it, see it in a way where it changes, right?
Sure.
And then the other thing is, that I have a couple of questions with is, so if that hasn't changed, does the redistricting affect anyone who's paying property taxes in the city today?
If you mean will it change what people are paying for property taxes? No. Everyone will continue to pay what they pay in property taxes based on the valuation of their homes as well as the tax rate set by the council.
So with the three maps that's proposed here?
Yes.
Did anybody that's sitting up here will lose their council seat based on this change?
Not based on Maps A, B, or C.
Okay. So that means council representation, A, District B, District C, District D, with the three maps that you currently have, that you're proposing, will stay in place?
Correct.
Without even one of those map gets approved, they won't be out of district where they will not be elected anymore?
Well, I mean, I can't predict who's elected-
Well, I'm talking about until the next election.
Not based on the map.
Not based on the map.
Not based on the map.
So which means if there, if, if the city council approves, let's just say hypothetically, Map B, there's no changes to any of the four district council members up?
Correct.
Okay. So in order to change to the at-large council districts, I mean, at-large council members, I should say, to a single-member district, what does it take to change that?
That would require a change of the city's charter and a charter, so essentially a charter election.
How does that, how do you get to the charter election? How can one, how can one can make that happen?
Based on the charter, about every four years, the city appoints a Charter Review Commission. That commission reviews and proposes different changes to the city's charter. After they provide their recommendations and reports, report to the council, the council decides which items to place on, if any, a future election.
So none of us sitting up here can make a charter change, right?
No, sir.
Even, even, even tomorrow or this coming May election?
No, sir.
Legally?
Sir?
Legally, we can't make that change.
Legally, you cannot. No, sir.
So we would have to wait for a, a approval of the Charter Review Commission to be put in place?
Correct.
And then you would recommend these items to, as maybe this is something to consider? And then they would come back with the recommendation to city council in order to make that change?
Sure. So generally, we collect potential changes that come up during the interim. And when it's time for that Charter Review Commission period, we present all of those potential changes to the commission and then the commission decides which changes it would actually like to recommend to you all.
Okay. So when will the next one be?
The last Charter Review Commission was in 2020. So the next Charter Review Commission will probably be appointed in 20, January of 2024.
So at that point, as something that residents are talking about, this, this single-member district, you can present it to the, to the review commission at that time?
Correct.
How do we pick the review commission?
Council selects the Charter Review Commission and then you all, you all decide who you would like to serve on the Charter Review Commission.
So is that put out to public that if they have an interest to serve on the Charter Review Commission?
I actually don't recall how it was conducted in the past, but if it's based on what the city does with traditional boards and commissions, an application is submitted and people apply to be on the commission.
So all four district council, council, city councils had their individual meeting that you had?
No, there's actually one more meeting tomorrow for District D. But we've had a meeting for District A, District B, District C. We've also had a general meeting on February 28th for the public. And we will also have the in-person meeting on January 23rd. The District D meeting is tomorrow.
Tomorrow? And then this Wednesday is the?
In-person meeting.
In-person meeting with everyone?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So how many total meetings that have we had already?
We've had, or we will have had five virtual meetings, three public hearings. That's all I can recall, not including kind of the preparation meetings on February 7th and February 21st.
So this 23rd meeting that's coming up Wednesday, anybody in the city can come up?
Yes. And actually, even though the district meetings are kind of geared towards specific districts, anybody can call in and participate in those meetings as well.
So after the Wednesday, let's just say if someone did not get an opportunity to come on Wednesday, what's next?
There is a public hearing on April 4th at which oral comments can be provided. However, written comments and proposed maps and changes are due on March 28th. So that's a week from today.
So when, when you're asking people to respond to MC红色
MC红色 redistricting@missourycitytx.gov.
Who gets those emails?
I get those emails.
And are you responding to those?
I am responding to those emails, yes.
And you have a track record of the ones that you responded?
Yes, sir. And those emails will be provided to you all in your packet for April 4th.
For April 4th?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, I just wanted to make a comment. You know, redistricting can be a little hairy. It's, it was done at the state level, done at the county level, and of course, per our charter, we have to do it at the city level here. And that's our obligation as council people per the charter. But I just want to say, you know, in all these maps, you know, based off of the current population growth in the city over the 10 years that the census was conducted, every single district is going to gain and/or lose someone. So there's going to be some shifting all across the board. It's not just mutually exclusive to one subdivision. And so, you know, I'm sure that everybody would like to remain status quo. And I, you know, I think that would be the easiest thing to do, but we have the tough task of actually having to, to look at these. But I, you know, just like my colleague, Councilwoman Riley, you know, at the first occurrence of us seeing the first map that was presented to us by the consultant, she made a recommendation as, as to what, you know, she'd like to see. And I think all of us, you know, have, have tried to kick the tire, squeeze the fruit, and have the least amount of impact and movement as possible. And so, you know, it's going to be a challenging situation, but I welcome everybody's comments and feedback.
Sure. Thank you. Ejoys, I just have one more for, so that this is clear. Every time you say that it establishes a relatively equal population, less than 10% deviation between district, can you explain that? What that means?
Yes, sir. So under federal law, there is a maximum deviation between the largest district and the smallest district that is allowed. That maximum deviation amount is 10%. So each map that has been presented to date has a maximum deviation of less than 10%. You can see from Map A, it's at about 9%. Map B is about 4%. And Map C is at about 3%.
And who determined that it needs to be within that 10% or less than 10%?
The Supreme Court.
So each of the maps that you proposed, which is A, B, and C, are under the 10% deviation?
Yes, sir.
Which is the lowest within that range?
Map C is actually the lowest at about 3.1, I believe it's 3.65%.
So even if you come up with a map that is at 9%, is that within the limit?
Yes.
So the goal is to see if there's a way to get it down to, close to a zero as possible with that? Does that make sense?
I wouldn't say that that's the goal. There is a legally allowable range. And so the maximum range is 10%. So anything under 10% has been found to be legal.
What is a census block?
A census block?
Census block.
The census block is a unit of the population that the government, they essentially break down different areas and the census block is just a unit by which they use to count certain populations.
So is that being used with, with all, all the maps that you, that's currently here?
Yes. So one of the city council's adopted principles was to not, or try not to break apart census blocks. And so when we put different areas together, part of the goals is, one of the goals is not to break apart a census block. So for example, Meadow Creek is in the same census block as the Pebblebrook neighborhood. So wherever the Meadow Creek population goes in any map, the Pebblebrook neighborhood will go as well because they're in the same census block.
So how do you break that up? Can you?
We don't have the ability to break up the census block to see who's in the census block. We're using census blocks.
Is this the same rule that obtained to City of Sugar Land or City of Pearland? Or any other cities local?
Yes. These are the same general principles that are applied to not just cities, but the state and to other units of government.
So the census block would pertain to the same thing as if I was living, if this was in City of Sugar Land?
Certainly. So there are census blocks all over, there are census blocks here, there are census blocks all over the country.
Okay. So I would ask you for this Wednesday's presentation, if you can have some of the Q and A that, that in these, each district that people have attended, that have asked, maybe at the, towards the end of your presentation, if you can have the questions and then have the answers as well? So this way people are aware of what it is. And question to the city manager, can that meeting be, be videoed or recorded?
The one on Wednesday?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. We'll take care of that.
So this way people will have an option to go back and watch?
The, the public presentation part of it, absolutely. I would anticipate that we're probably going to have like some maps out and people be able to walk around and talk and look at stuff. I don't know if that stuff would get really recorded, but the presentation part of it will get recorded.
Yeah, I'm talking about your opening and your presentation of what these look like because every single one of these maps should be printed in a, in a larger format so this way people can actually look at their street if they needed to. And I'm sure that you would have staff that's available other than yourself that kind of walked this, you know, walked the residents through, right?
Yes. And so what, what I've actually done or asked GIS to do is print out the larger maps. We have received maps from the vendor that include kind of subdivisions to help people figure out where they are, when they're, or where they might be when they're looking at the proposed map. So we have different copies of Maps A, B, and C, but kind of broken down by the subdivision.
Sure. So I'm just talking about your opening, your presentation. Obviously, we can't walk around. I mean, it doesn't show anything. But at the same time, the, the questions that you have received, whether they're from council members or whether they're from our public, under public comments, or email to MC红色redistricting and what have you? So that way that it's, it's, if people don't have the opportunity to come on Wednesday, that they'll be able to go back and watch and, and, or some of us can share it to our constituents if they're asking us the questions so this way we can see it as well.
Certainly. And I've tried to do that. We have, our residents have been very engaged. I've received, I have actually received some very good questions. And when I receive those, I've actually been able to incorporate those into each subsequent district presentation.
Sure. I would also like to make a comment to, to have either perhaps maybe Parks Department or Economic Development to come up with these posters because I've seen several events that they put on and these posters were large enough. So this way it's accessible to people. So at least chime in to help because this is a very important key piece right here for residents. As we heard it all day, throughout this whole process, they're not getting an opportunity to see the map. They're not, it's not big enough. It's not a large size enough. We have had several job, job fairs, several things in this room, and it's been an excellent team effort. So I would ask the staff of the city, city manager, if you can, to allow others to be, to be able to help residents and, and to, how are we posting this information out there to public? Is this on our marquee? Have we sent a news release out, an email blast? I mean, other avenues about this coming up meeting?
Yes, sir. So it's gone out, it's on the marquee, it's available on the website and has gone out, I believe via the email blast, but I'd have to double check. and has gone out, I believe via the email blast, but I'd have to double check.
Okay.
E Joyce, what efforts have you taken to work with the Communications Department, their HOA liaison, to make sure that all the HOAs are notified? I know I proposed for us to do some type of tour and where we go to the HOA, but it was deemed impossible. So I wanted to know, what was your effort to actually communicate this information?
So prior to bringing the plan to you all in February, or that first illustra, the first map, proposed map to you all in February, I met with the acting director to come up with a communications plan to get out the information on redistricting. Since that time, of course, it's evolving. And so with the suggestions that we've received, additional meetings and additional modes of communication have been added. And I have talked to the HOA liaison as well as the interim director at the time about sending out information to all of the HOAs, and that did go out, I believe, late February, that information went out to all of the HOA.
I'm sorry, I don't want to be rude, but I want to know, okay, maybe I should simplify my question. What have you done to make sure that the residents are informed about the meeting that's coming up on the Wednesday?
So, oh, okay, I see that the chief information officer is...
We got with the HOA liaison and got with representatives and property managers to send out communication about the redistricting. From the last meeting that you came up and you said we need to get more information out there, we did go ahead and get out there and pushed the information to all media, website, and to the representatives of HOA.
Are those HOAs, like those presidents, confirming that they're receiving the information, that they're going to disseminate it out?
We have not heard back from them, but we did submit the information to all of the HOAs.
Okay, I would propose that we get like a really nice FAQ that we can post. I know it's a lot of information, but some of the frequent asked questions could be, you know, pretty much put on a paper that we can just send out and give some facts. I don't think the problem is the process. I think it's the communication and the lack thereof. A lot of residents aren't able to log on. You know firsthand how many issues I had with logging on WebEx. I mean, it's kind of difficult at times. So I believe that it's important that we do our due diligence to make sure the residents are informed and understand the process. That's why we have so much confusion. They don't really understand it. And so, I just want you to work with E Joyce, you and your team, to get some type of information out to them, a quick little video, something, because I just would hate to rush this process and then they're thinking that someone's going to lose their seat or anything like that when really it's something that we have to do. So I believe we should break it down to them, but also continue to push out and get them involved more.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right.
E Joyce, I have a question to elaborate on. I believe there's a lot of confusion of why people have to move from certain districts into another district, because when they're looking at these numbers of the current population in C and D, that seems to be the greatest, you know, deviation. Having 21,000 plus in D and 17,000 plus in C. And I know Mayor made the statement earlier about why not just move those two districts within themselves. I understand the statement that you made, but I think it's important for people to understand why touch the other two districts if they are, seem to be closer to the normal population versus just making some minor adjustments in C and D.
Sure, so your question is kind of again, why? And that's again, because you, there, it's not possible to touch one district without touching all of the districts, because when we move population in one place, we have to add population. Or when we delete population, we have to add it in another place. Another reason as well is because that one of you all's adopted criteria was to try to put neighborhoods together. For example, Creekmont North is located in, currently located in District B, and Creekmont South is currently located in District D. And so one change that's been made to each proposed maps, each proposed map A, B, and C, is that Creekmont South has been moved to District B. And so when you do that, again, you know, you can't move people in one place without touching people in another place, then District B gains that population and has to offset some population in order to put that entire district in one place. And because of the over, current overpopulation of District D, it wouldn't be, it's not possible to put all of it into District D, so it moves to District B.
So why not just leave Creekmont the way that it is and consider moving another area in D into C? That's a smaller portion that will give C its balance that it's needed. Because proposing to move, and I know that you mentioned early in your presentation that these neighborhoods need to basically touch up against each other. And honestly, I don't understand how Meadow Creek even connects to District A. And the fact that you would want to move Hunter's Point Estates out of District A into District B and add in Meadow Creek to District A, and those two connect, those two communities don't even connect to one another.
So when we talk about contiguity, it's the part of the map where it connects to the rest of District A. So if you look at, for example, proposed map C, you'll see that Meadow Creek already touches District A next to the Quail Valley North area. So when we talk about contiguity, we mean it has to touch another existing part of the district.
And that's the only way that you can do that? Because I looked at all three of the maps, and I see where Hunter's Point Estates was deliberately carved out. It's a very small portion that backs up to Hunter's Glen 1 and 2. It doesn't even connect directly to District B the way that it connects to District A, which would also mean you're moving Hunter's Point, Hunter's Park as well, Hunter's Glen Park as well, and a part of those businesses on Texas Parkway. And from looking at the map, I see that there's another route that you can take by moving around Meadow Creek. If they don't want to be moved, why should we be moving them?
So one of your, I believe, proposed maps was to put Hunter's Point, Hunter's Point Estates back into B?
A.
Oh, A, I apologize, into A. And so when I talk to the consultant, that's something they'll look at. So they'll kind of move the neighborhoods around based on the comments that you provided. And then if that works in terms of the numbers, that will be presented as well. Ultimately, this council gets to decide which map it would like to adopt. So if there's a map that you don't like, then it's up to each one of you to not vote for that map.
And I understand we have to vote on the map, but first we have to have a map that's valid, that's going to work with the residents to be able to vote on.
So I'll, and you know, comments are accepted. And I think, you know, we look at the comments and try to analyze the comments and try to create maps that apply those comments. But ultimately, as the city attorney, I'm not here to tell you what district, or what subdivision should be in what district, that's not my job. I'm just here to ensure that whatever map we have that's presented is compliant with the law. So if you all would like other changes, you know, you submitted a list. If there are other changes, folks can submit that in writing, and then we will try to make those changes and propose those maps.
So then residents really need to look at these maps and look at the subdivisions, and they need to make something written, a written proposal to you specifically, where they think subdivisions should map up to, to connect to, and how they want to be moved into certain districts.
Correct, and the city's requirements for written comments are also available on the city's website as well.
And the deadline for written comments and responses is March 28?
Yes, ma'am.
Which is next Monday?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, E Joyce, let me make a comment. District D, you know, has the most members or citizens in the existing district maps. And it required that, I think, over 3,000 of those had to be removed from District D. I think two of the maps are in line with that requirement. Some of it goes to District B. And to mention about Creekmont, I think the thing that, what I saw was with Creekmont South going to B, they have one HOA, they don't have two HOAs. So I think it's, makes it a little more workable when you have one HOA. And then on the, I guess that's the south side of D, we give up, I say we, the proposal is to redistrict a number of developments into District C, which had the least number and had to be expanded. So, you know, at this point, I hope that we take those things into consideration as far as our developments, our homeowner associations, you know, not being split. And I think District D, you know, has eliminated or has been able to move some of our developments over to C and B to bring the map into conformity. So, thank you.
Thank you. There are no further discussions. There's been a motion to close the public hearing by Councilmember Klausert, seconded by Mayor Pro Temboni. Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to the motion, please say no. Motion carries 7-0. Ken, thank you. Item number eight are appointments. There are no appointments on this agenda. Item number nine are authorizations. 9A, consideration and possible action authorizing the request by the Exchange Club of Fort Bend to post child abuse awareness signs along 98 and Present Streets. Mesa Garcia.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So the month of April is actually Child Abuse Awareness Month, and the Fort Bend Exchange Club has requested permission to display signs in the Highway 90 median east of Present Street intersection, which is over there by Bob Best Burger's. This is to raise awareness for child abuse. The Exchange Club has made this same request in the past several years, and the sign would be located for the month of April. This will have about, consist of four signs placed successively, Burma Shave style, and leading to white stakes with blue ribbons. These stakes and ribbons will be displayed in the median in the city of Stafford, as well as one banner will be located within the city of Missouri City to communicate the troubles approaching from the east.
Thank you, is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been a motion by Councilmember Emery, seconded by Councilmember Riley. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If I could just, just add that we maybe put some information out to support this effort, maybe through the communications about child, child abuse statistics, so that we can make this a true awareness. I mean, you know, I have remembered in years past seeing the signage, but if we can just take this a step further in awareness and do some communications out.
Of course, noted, thank you.
Let me, let me add, Missouri City Exchange Club, which is totally in favor of this and has participated in this program for a number of years. So I think if you're looking, you're looking for additional communications, the Missouri City Exchange Club, you know, passes this information out through all of our members and our website. So it's, I applaud you for, you know, getting the word out because it's, you know, really important. And I think all of the exchange clubs sponsor the, these programs to bring light to, you know, a really problem that we have and that we really need to address and attack. So, thank you.
Okay, there's been a motion by Councilmember Emery, seconded by Councilmember Riley. There are no other discussions. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries 7-0, thank you. Item eight, 9B, consider and possible action authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the purchase of a tract of land for the right-of-way parks and recreation purposes, and further authorizing the mayor to sign the deed on behalf of the city accepting such conveniences. There's a presentation by Charles Jackson, city manager.
Mayor and Council, good evening. On February 21st of this year, city council adopted and passed a resolution authorizing the acquisition of 8.341 acres of land needed for street right-of-way parks and recreation purposes. We had discussed at that time the fact that the city had begun and had completed an appraisal on that land around March 3rd. I met with the representatives for the Imani School, and we sat down and went over their requests for that property. After the, at the completion of that meeting, we settled on a negotiated price of $881,260. That proposed purchase amount is well within the fair market value of the land as was reported in the February 7th appraisal report. The proposed closing date contained in the purchase contract is March 25th later this week. Our request and the city council authorized me to execute that contract on behalf of the city for the purchase of the 8.341 acres of land owned by the Imani School located at the northwest corner of East Hampton Circle and Katy Street, and further request of the mayor to accept the deed on behalf of the city. And I do have Jason and Sasha, if anybody needs to refer to what we talked about for the property.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we consider the action first, city manager.
Second. It's been a motion by Councilmember Marulis, seconded by Mayor Pro Temboni. Is there a discussion? Before we do that, I do, we have one public comment, right?
Right.
I'd like to have that public comment to speak, and then we can go into discussion.
Mr. Bruce Zabrowski?
Well, it's good, you're finally showing some attention to the Harris County section. Great, I think that's fantastic. Keep up the good work. But there's one other item. If you're going to build a park over there or a playground, people in Fond Meadows Section 1 still need a bridge to get over it because a bayou does separate it. Thank you.
All right, so there's been a motion by Councilmember Marulis, seconded by Mayor Pro Temboni. Is there a discussion?
It's been talking to the community about us having this land and seizing it for eminent domain. We did purchase it for 800K, correct?
That is what the request is right now, is to approve that contract at 881,260.
Okay, is it connected to any other, another plot, or is it just individualized?
Another plot as far as another park or another piece?
Plot.
So it's surrounded on two sides by roads, East Hampton Circle and Cathy. On the north side, it's got homes, and on the west side, there's that Harris County drainage.
Okay, do you have the physical address?
The physical address?
Yes.
We just created one, it didn't have one, we just created it. I can grab it if you want.
Sure.
The address is listed in the, in the contract is Zero East Hampton Circle.
Yeah, we had one created.
But we had to get one created for it.
Jason, why are you looking for that? Do you have like an estimated cost of the equipment and everything that's going to take to build out?
No, we haven't done any design work on this park at all. Right now, we're just focusing on acquiring the land for future development.
Once you do so, can you please share that with us? I'm sure you will, but just in your forefront.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And just so you guys know, while he's finishing looking that up, we will have this added to the maintenance contract beginning tomorrow morning. So we will get this mowed and knocked out at least where people can go out there and use it as an open space. and use it as an open space until we can get the planning done for the park.
All right.
I have a question. Jason, what is the proposed timeframe that y'all would possibly consider starting construction on this?
Yeah, so this is not a budgeted item to, to build this park. We have, right now, our, our next five-year bond projects laid out. So if, if it were to be sooner than the next bond, it would have to be funded in a different way. And that would be up to y'all.
I also have another question. And city manager, you can answer this for me, or mayor. Is it normal procedure for the mayor to sign the deed on behalf of the city?
Yes, it is.
That's in the charter.
Okay. Thank you.
You mean I can't take that park with me? No, I just want to, no, no question, just a comment to say that, you know, there's been comments that we've heard that District A, you know, really don't have a city park. And I commend the staff, especially Jason, your team, as well as city manager, for going after this and trying to make this happen. And not waiting for so long. I definitely would like to see the, see that it's mowed and put a sign out there that shows that this is part of our city, that we take pride in this. And then as we come forward with, you know, any funding or ARPO or any of that federal dollars, I'd like to see some things that start happening with this area, not just waiting on for the next month. Okay?
So, so to answer your question, the address that was created for that property is 15002 East Hampton Circle.
15002. Thank you. And I didn't hear your answer to Councilmember Riley's point. How long will it be before we do the build out?
It, it's not budgeted at all. So we would have to develop a budget, bring it to council for approval. And so that?
What's your time, what's your timeline for that?
I mean, we could start as early, I mean, we could start it as early as next fiscal year, putting in together design cost estimates to design it. I mean, again, that's your, the count, at the council's privilege.
Our budget, budget discussions start sometime in May, right?
We'll, we'll start the staff process in about another month.
Okay. So, and then you can make that some proposals so we can look at it at that point.
You bet.
And my last question, Jason. Will the community have any input on some of the things that they would like to see for that particular proposed park?
Absolutely. That's how, how we design all of our parks is we reach out. We have public meetings, design charrettes, is what we call them, and gather people together. Everything from the elements that they want to see down to we bring kids together, what do you want to see in a playground type of thing. So we, we absolutely will, we'll do that for this park as well.
Great. One last comment. Just so that we can stay consistent with our community engagement, can we make sure that when we get ready to start this process, the design phase especially, can we make sure that we are putting the information out to that particular community and connected communities in District A so that they have enough time to prepare their schedules to kind of conjure up their ideas and suggestions and things of that nature versus us, you know, waiting to the last minute to push out a meeting or something like that? Let's have some good marketing on that.
Yeah, we, we will, our practice is to actually send individual mailers out to every household within a quarter-mile radius of a new park site, and we will, we would do that for this as well.
Good. Thank you. And thank you so much to your staff and city manager for you guys, you know, acting so quickly about this.
Jason, this is my last comment. I would propose that you have that same community engagement when we're naming the park or coming up with the name. Just make sure the community is engaged. I understand we have the power to do so, but I think it's important that we have the community's input as well.
Yeah, one of the great ways to name a park is to have a contest. And I really have some fun with it. And we, I've done that in other communities as well. So we can, we look at lots of different ways to do it.
Sure. Thank you.
Do we have some policy around that?
On naming?
Yeah.
Yes, it's, it's, it's in the ordinance, there's an ordinance, naming ordinance.
I also want to take the opportunity to thank, thank all of you who are up here for also not delaying this process and kind of, when we heard about this and kind of jumping on it and, and making sure that, that this takes place for that district. So that, let the comment be noted that, you know, we, we not, that we don't take care of District A. We do. And this is truly a step. And I hope this process would work, you know, towards faster, at least in the coming up budget. It could be something that could be done to start that process.
Awesome.
Okay. All right, it's been a motion by Councilmember Marulis, seconded by Mayor Pro Temboni. There are no further discussions. Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to the motion, please say no. Motion carries seven zero. Item number 10 are ordinances. Oh, we did that, item 10A already. Item 10B.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, amending the general budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2021, and ending September 30th, 2022. Transferring various appropriations among accounts, appropriating supplemental revenue to various fund accounts, authorizing the appropriate city officials to take steps necessary to accomplish such transfers, making certain findings, and containing certain provisions relating to the subject.
We have a presentation by Lena Portis, financial director.
Mayor, members of council, this budget amendment has two different transactions. The first one being in the general fund, which is a net zero impact. It is adding $70,000 to contractual services and parks and recreation based on the increased demand for programming. The $70,000 will be added to contractual services, but it will also be offset by revenue. This is, this chart here shows the different classes. The revenue is received by the city at 100% and then 80% is paid to the instructor, and the city keeps 20% of the revenue. So this is in the private and group trainers, youth volleyball, baton twirling, line dancing, and teen life skills lab. The second amendment deals with the LGC. It was also presented at the LGC meeting this evening. And this is increase in appropriations, $80,000 for improvements to the irrigation system and security camera system. This amount will be paid out of the facility improvement fees that we have been collecting since fiscal year 2020. Currently, we have approximately $243,000 set aside for capital improvements at the golf course. I'm available to answer any questions you may have. We also have representatives from Parks and Rec, and I believe the golf course for any questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion? So move. It's been a motion by Mayor Pro Temboni, seconded by Councilmember Riley. Is there a discussion?
Just want to say this came before our Finance and Services Committee meeting this afternoon, and it was unanimously approved, Mayor.
All right. If there are no other discussions, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion, please say no. Motion carries six one. Item number 11 are resolutions. There are no resolutions for consideration on this agenda. Item number 12, city council announcement. If we can also keep as public do for three minutes, I think it'd be helpful if we can do that. We'll start off with Councilmember Riley.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to start off by saying Happy St. Patrick's Day to all of our Irish friends out there. Hope everyone also enjoyed their spring break as I did. I attended the March Coffee with Leadership. It was really great to see some of our return stakeholders come out and join us for coffee. And I always thank and appreciate our vendors. I also attended our District A redistricting meeting along with the District B redistricting meeting. The Fawn Meadow HOA meeting. I was also invited to read to the children at the Hunter's Glen Early Literacy Center to some kindergartners as well as serving on their advisory leadership committee. Also attended the Meadow Creek HOA meeting and had an opportunity to also attend with my colleagues, the Caddyshack ribbon cutting, where they were gracious enough to create me a mountain-moving Monica daiquiri. That was a little tasty. I was also able to attend the International Women's Day swarway hosted by the American Caribbean, Caribbean Chamber of Commerce, where they celebrated dozens of women. It was a beautiful and diverse event. I want to say congratulations to Meeshaw's with their grand opening and ribbon cutting this past weekend. I was not able to attend as I was out of town. Along with, I want to congratulate the protests that took place in my district, the gas station protest. I got great feedback that it was good to see residents out there exercising a well-attended peaceful protest while advocating very firmly and directly about what they see for their vision of that property and for their community. So congratulations to the poetry readers, winners tonight from Marshall High School, and also looking forward to seeing the resolutions of the upcoming month for next month. That ends my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Edwards?
I would like to say Happy Women's History Month. We have a wealth of women leaders that are pushing our city forward. So I commend you guys for your efforts, and I thank you for your service to our city. I was able to attend the virtual meetings that we all held previously, just wishing that we can continue to get the word out to the residents so they can feel empowered, educated, and that they aren't being ignored. I often have the opportunity, weekly actually, to have, participate in the mentorship program at Edgar Glover Elementary. My mentee is evolving every week, and I'm super proud of her for coming out of her comfort zone. And I look forward to continuing to be the role model for her. Saturday, I was also able to attend the protest with my constituents on 1300 Grand Parkway. Although it's nothing pretty much we can do further for the city, I do stand with the residents and hoping that the owners will actually, you know, try to do something different and be good neighbors to the residents of Missouri City and that portion of the community. So I do appreciate the peaceful protest and the residents from getting involved. You know, that's something that we can really be proud of them for. Also, on the 20, sorry, on the 18th of this Saturday, I was able to attend a balloon release for the victim that was killed on like Olympia Parkway. He was 18, and he was a graduating senior, progressed to pretty much graduate in May, and he was killed by a drunk driver. And so that was a huge tragedy, and the community really did show up and come out for him for the balloon release. But I do want to remind residents to drink responsibly. It's so many different transportations that we can take, whether it's Uber, Lyft, calling a friend. But please make sure that your choice to drink under the influence will have a heavy impact on everyone. And so I do want to keep the Spavy family in my prayers, and I ask for my colleagues to do the same. He was only 18, and so it's really a tragic loss to our community. Last but not least, I do want to continue to recognize the three young women, Brianna Means, Cameron Sterling, and Kenyatta Sterling, for their phenomenal performance today. And so many times, like I mentioned earlier, that we make the decisions for, you know, the city, but we never engage the youth. And I think that they spoke proudly on how they envisioned our city to look forward on this corridor. And I'm hoping that my colleagues and the directors will take heed to, you know, their ideas. So that concludes my announcements. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Marulis.
Along with others, join the Candy Shack daiquiri ribbon cuttings. We welcome them. Also, the Meeshaw's ribbon cutting was outstanding. And I just want to say that that family's an amazing family. I know they get involved in the community, and congratulations to their new location. I'm really excited about parks. We went to an awesome multi-golf park ribbon cutting celebration, whatever it may be. And what's really cool about that, it's the first in the USA, the first golf park in Missouri City. And I congratulate Jason and team for doing a nice disc golf and foot golf. Actually played it a couple of times this weekend, and I still am not very good. But also excited about the parks in District A. 800K tonight, 200K in the special, rather in the consent. So that's about a million dollars in District A. So I'm excited about that and look forward to the future of parks in District A. I would like to continue to pray for those in Ukraine and in the Middle East. Very tough times right now. And Greek Independence Day is March 25th. And lastly, go Cougs, for my Cougar fans.
Thank you. Councilmember Klausner.
Mayor, I want to send a big congratulations to Mr. Williams, who was granted the principal of the year for elementary schools, Hunter's Glen. I was supposed to honor him tonight, but he could not make it for the weather. So we're going to postpone that till next, next week. And then also Keith Fickle, who is the principal of the year for secondary schools in Fort Bend ISD. That's a big deal, and I come from a family of educators. So I just want to thank them publicly and congratulate them. I attended two ribbon cuttings. I think most of the council members showed up to the daiquiri spot. We had a great time. And, and also the coffee, that's what it was. I actually took some time last week to wind down and enjoy my family. And as busy as I stay, it felt really, really good to just go on vacation and enjoy my family. I attended my 90th Central, South Central Region Sorority, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. We celebrated from Thursday until yesterday our 90th South Central Regional Conference, and that was really fun. And last but not least, I think the highlight of my month has been my 17-year-old son, who is living his life on the autism spectrum, interviewed for his first job and nailed his, nailed his first job. Never in a million years would I think a child that possibly couldn't speak one day would be begging me to go buy him a new suit, to dress up in a suit and tie to go get a job at Maude Pizza. So I want to thank my constituent, Jason Hamner, who is the manager there, for recognizing those that are differently abled and giving my son a shot. He asked all the right questions, and I couldn't have been more proud. April 1st is Autism, World Autism Day. And as we approach World Autism Day, April 1st, make sure you reach out to families that are living with autism. You know, April 1st is World Autism Day, but those families that live with autism live with it 365 days a year. So Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Emery?
I attended and supported the 42nd Missouri City St. Patrick's Day Golf Tournament. This is a tournament that uses the funds that it raises to support a number of different local charities. Gives out between 15 and 17 scholarships to deserving youths. And it's one that was, we had participation of 38 teams, which is about 190 folks. We had a nice dinner afterwards, and the, they have a silent auction and a live auction. And typically what they are able to, to bring in is revenue to be able to support these charities and our students. For the scholarships, it runs somewhere between $75,000 to $100,000. So there's a lot of money that comes in that we send it right back out to, to our charities and to our local youths that are in need of scholarship assistance. I also attended the Meeshaw ribbon cutting. It was a great event. After the event was winding down, they provided us with a meal. And I'll tell you, it was eye-opening to watch our Mayor Pro Tim get the oxtail dinner. When I looked at it, he had more than the oxtail. He had the whole ox. So it was, but the food was excellent, and so was the service. I attended the, virtually the Quill Valley HOA annual meeting. It was a virtual meeting. So we were able to, to hear some of the things that are going on with, with the Quill Valley HOA. And in regards to our redistricting, the communications, what I did was I pulled the, the two items off of our Missouri City TX that talked about the redistricting, the District D meeting, a virtual meeting that's coming up, and the in-person, the live? the District D meeting, a virtual meeting that's coming up, and the in-person, the live meeting that's going to be held here on the, the next day, the 20th, 25th, and I shared that with at least four of our private, our individual community websites, so we were able, by that, that type of sharing, we hit Lake Olympia, Quail Valley, and Lake Shore Harbor, so we're trying to get the communications out, that we are going through a real important process of redistricting, and we need everybody's input, so I know there's more to do, but I think every little bit helps, so whatever you can do to get the word out, I know it's coming up real quickly, but you never know, when you put something out, somebody may see it and be able to attend, so those are my comments.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Temboni.
I too attended the Coffee with Leadership event, always a grand affair, I love being there, we left here about midnight and had to turn around and be up at seven in the morning, so kudos to everybody that made it that morning, by the way, including staff. I also attended District B and C redistricting virtual meetings, I also attended the MeShaw ribbon cutting, and I don't think I had the whole ox, I had a, I had half of it, yeah, probably half of it, but nonetheless, we also had an outstanding Freedom Tree Park Committee meeting, I want to thank Jason and his staff, and the people that are on that, that committee, of course, my colleague, you know, Councilmember Emery, he and I have been on this trail since 2018, and we're excited about the direction that we're heading, speaking about Parks, to make that park something that is a world-class visitation spot for us to, and destination spot for people to attend and bring their families and learn about the great history of Missouri City, and of course, contributions of African-Americans in this, in this community and in this country. I also attended three HOA meetings in my district, Bradford Village, Quail Valley East, and Creekmont, where I was able to share information on redistricting, answer all their questions that they had around that, as well as invite them out to the upcoming redistricting meetings virtually and in person. I had the great privilege of joining Mayor Alakat and State Representative Ron Reynolds to issue a proclamation to Adonai Mitchell, who is a Missouri City resident, who attends the University of Georgia, many of you may remember, he was the, the wide receiver who caught the 40-yard touchdown pass to put University of Georgia ahead against the University of Alabama, and of course, they eventually won the game, we honored him with a proclamation, and, you know, he was very, very humbled and honored, and his family had some, some very moving words for him, and it was a lot of tears and all that involved, but I want to thank Mayor Alakat and State Representative Reynolds, and of course, city staff, Crystal Pritchard, and, and the entire staff for making sure that that event was, was well received. Speaking of State Representative Reynolds and Mayor Alakat, I was honored to stand with them, along with the residents in Hunter's Glen area, who are vehemently against the development of that gas station in the heart of their neighborhood, I'm not anti-business, but I understand the deep concerns that that community has regarding the business owner's decision to move forward with this, and it's my hope that, you know, their heartstrings and their ears have been burning as it relates to the communication that's been going forth surrounding this, but I too want to again thank Mayor Alakat and State Representative Reynolds for their leadership in that. A few other things, I went to the National League of Cities Congressional City Conference in Washington DC, was proud to once again represent the City of Missouri City, our great city, especially as I was reappointed to the Community and Economic Development Federal Advocacy Committee in the newly appointed position that I was received on the Race Equity and Leadership Real Council. During our CED meeting, Community Economic Development meeting, I advocated before that committee regarding a push to include funding to address food deserts and medical healthcare deserts as part of the funding allowances for increased legislation, as we continue to deal with the COVID-19 pandemic, and also pushed to urge Congress, you know, through our public policy initiatives, to pass the Outdoors for All Act, to increase funding to create and improve parks and other outdoor recreation areas to improve public access. Lastly, I just want to say, my wife and I celebrated our 25th wedding anniversary this past week, and it dawned on me, as I was, as we were coming upon it, that over half of my life, literally, has been spent with her, I'm 47, and so everything that has happened in my life, I can't take any credit for it on my own, I have to definitely give her kudos and credit, because I, I cannot acknowledge my success without her being a major part of it, and that includes my service here on Missouri City Council, and that concludes my comments.
Thank you. I do have a few, few comments, Missouri City Youth Commission, wait, not Missouri City Youth Commission, Mayor's Youth Commission, had the opportunity to go to the state capitol, I want to thank all those that attended, especially some of the parents who, who helped us to volunteer, as well as our PD department, Chief Bear Zan, we had Lieutenant Jazin Hurd, as well as Officer Valerie Elias, and, and Shashi Kumar, and we had Cedric Cole, Joby Matthew, Tara Crane, there were so many of you that kind of came and attended, and great educational opportunity, we had the opportunity to meet with the Mayor's Youth Commission, not only meet with, see the very VIP private tour, but they got to meet our state rep, Ron Reynolds, as well as District 26 State Rep, J.C. Jettan, so we made sure we had a Republican and a Democrat there, so the kids were excited to see the different point of view and how they see things, so there were some good Q and A sessions that took place, and then after that, we were able to come back, so I want to take this opportunity to thank State Representative Ron Reynolds' office, who really coordinated the entire event, and State Rep from District 26, J.C. Jettan, happened to be there and said absolutely that he'll take part of this. So thank you all for making this happen, especially to our coordinator for this is Jackson, and Jason, please give him the kudos, because he did, he had everything down from getting every single parent's phone number, so he was texting when we left there, 30 minutes prior to, you know, being here, he alerted them, so it was a good system in place, so I'm sure, I did hear a lot of positive comments from the parents as well, that they had a great time, the kids really enjoyed it, so it was a great program. I also had opportunity to join Councilmember Morales to the MAC Multi-Golf Course, as he stated, great course, if you have not had the opportunity to go, please take a look at it. There was a mobility and ITS master plan study that was, that was done here in this building where we are today, with Shashi Kumar's team, I had the opportunity to attend, great process, there were several people that was here going through it, and I'm looking forward to the findings and, and where we go from here. Couple of initiatives around this city that's important to us was Rhonda Kirkendall with Speak Up Sex Trafficking in this room, we had a, and I believe it was recorded, our District Attorney Brian Middleton, along with Rhonda Kirkendall, and then the whole team was able to put on a, on a talk here that alert parents to talk about, you know, the importance of, important to identify sex traffickers, and to talk about those initiatives, so if anyone's interested, and I know those are out there. Coffee Leadership has been going really well, I did hear a couple of positive comments, but also some questions to see that if we can rotate this around to not just have it on, you know, the second Tuesday at 7:30 to 8:30, someone was hoping that if we can have something on the evening hour, so I just wanted to put it out there as a comment from public. And then I did hear that Fire Station 6 is moving next week, or this week, that you guys are going to be in your new place, and I think we're having the ribbon cutting in May, I believe, the beginning of May for that. Also wanted to just welcome Tara Crane, Tara, I know you started in Director of Communication on the 14th of this month, so welcome to City of Missouri City. I was also being able to join Mayor Pro Temboni at the gas station protest, and shared our comments and shared our feelings, and I just recently found out that the, the permit was granted to them, and, and it's going through the process that it is, and so we stand again solidly with the residents of that neighborhood, that's my comment. Missouri City Leadership, I just want to make a comment, you may not be noticing or listening to it, I had the opportunity to be on LinkedIn for the last two months, and been able to share some of the things that's happening in Missouri City, not just with the leadership, but everything that's going on with Missouri City. I have had so many people that contacted me off of LinkedIn, I've never met them, I don't know who they are, but really talking about the team of Missouri City, the, the leadership team, so I'm excited to hear those positive comments, as you know, it's a small world, most of you, most of them would know you at some sort of capacity or what have you, but, you know, as I'm hearing positive comments from the community at large, talking about how great the leadership is and how we're moving forward with everything that's going on with Missouri City, so kudos to the Missouri City Leadership Team. Lastly, I want to take this opportunity to thank you, Ejoyce, for the amount of time that you spend on this redistricting, and some of the questions that you have taken on from our residents, those questions that came to you from, from the MC, MC redistricting, it almost seems like you become the werewolf or the bad wolf of the whole pack, and without having any input, without having any decision that you are going to make on this redistricting map, but as a mayor of this city, I want to let you know that I commend you for what you have done with this redistricting, and how you're taking it to the next level, there's some educational opportunities that's needed, but that's within any, anywhere, but as a city attorney for this city, I applaud you for what you have done with this redistricting process, that ends my comment, thank you. Item number 10 are closed executive sessions, there are no closed executive sessions on this, item number 15, if there are no other further businesses.
Mayor, real quick, can I make one comment real quick, just, I want to say, we have been, during the course of meeting, I've been hearing a lot from a number of my counterparts across the state, looks like we've had a pretty bad tornado touchdown in Elgin already tonight, another one in Hutto, another one in Realm Rock, so we probably do have some other coming this way, so everybody please be careful this night, and pray for our neighbors that have already been affected.
Well, thank you.
Mayor, can I take this moment to remind everybody about the upcoming Texas Parkway Cartwright Town Hall meeting that'll be on the 31st of March, I'd like to encourage all the residents to come out to that, so that they can find out all the exciting things happening on the corridor, thank you.
All right, no further business, this meeting is adjourned, the time is 10:09 PM, thank you all.